Good evening. My name is Jason Delisle. I'm president of the Speedway Town Council. It is 7:02 on October 7, 2024, and I call this meeting to order. We'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, quick introductions. To my right is our town manager, Grant Kleinhead.
Good evening.
Town councillor Sarah Gardner.
Good evening.
Councillor, Town Councillor Sean Harrow.
Good evening.
And to my left is our Ted, is our town attorney. Ted Nolte.
Good evening.
Our Clerk Treasurer Philip Faust.
Good evening.
And our Vice President Nick Sturgeon.
Good evening.
Our first item is the approval of minutes from the September 23, 2024 meeting.
I'll make a motion to approve our minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll second.
All right, any comments, questions regarding our minutes? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our minutes, say aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? That passes 4-0. Next item is approval of the memorandum of our administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on September 23, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve our memorandum of administrative session of the Speedway Town Council on September 23, 2024.
I'll second.
All right, any comments or questions? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our administrative session memorandum of the Speedway Town Council on September 23, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed? That passes 4-0. Next item is approval of submission of the preliminary engineering report for the combined sewer overflow improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Grant?
I think you jumped one.
We skipped number four.
The request for IMS.
All right, we'll come back to number five. Thank you all. Sorry. So our next item is request from IMS to install additional signage along Crawfordsville Road. Grant?
Yes, so this was a simple request that came from Pat Garlock with IMS Operations. They would like to install a directional sign, very similar to what they already have on Crawfordsville Road, to better identify the main parking lot off of Cord Street. So we are currently looking at where it's best to put those signs. We believe we could probably put signs in the middle of the median. We have a pole there that could work. Or we'll put them on the outside of the right-of-way on the north side and south side of Crawfordsville. So all I'm asking the Town Council, which all is required, is for you to make a motion, second, and approve the placement of that signage in that area. We'll work. We'd love to get it in the center of the median, less pollution, right, sign pollution. But we'll put them on the outsides, north and south, if that's what makes the most sense. So I'll answer any questions that you might have.
All right, I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the request from IMS to install additional signage along Crawfordsville Road.
I'll second.
All right, any comments or questions?
I guess just a concern, just on the placement, is that it doesn't impede the view of traffic or.
No, we will make sure that there's no sightline issues with turns there in and out. We'll make sure that that is taken care of. That's why I think we're trying to better understand where it makes the most sense, so.
And so I guess the other part of that too, will it be the same dimensions as the one in the picture?
Yep. So the picture that was shown here, it will look exactly like that. And typically, they take those down at the end of the year, so they take them down about November and don't put them back up until May. So they're up about 60%, 65% of the year.
Okay.
And this will be the same?
Yes.
As we come down?
Yep. And I would point out that this area is not in Speedway. Those signs are stored outside of our town limits, so there's no code enforcement issue. In case you were wondering.
All right, any other comments? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our request from IMS to install additional signage along Crawfordsville Road, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes 4-0. All right, now, the next item is our approval of submission of the preliminary engineering report for the combined sewer overflow improvements at the wastewater treatment plant. Grant?
Yes, so this evening, we have representatives from RQAW, who is our engineering firm. Aaron Crowe is the project manager and his team. We are ready to submit what is referred to as the preliminary engineering report for the proposed improvements according to the agreed order that was entered into about 18 months ago. This is a long process that will culminate in the potential construction of a new storage tank. So when we have larger storms than normal, we can contain that water on site and allow it over a period of 24 to 48 hours to drain out. So this preliminary engineering report will go to IDIM. It will be reviewed by them. We also have some questions that we are trying to get answers for from, from IDIM about some of the design standards. For instance, we don't want aeration. It's just an extra cost if we don't believe it's necessary. We have to prove that to IDIM. And then this will also qualify us to apply for funding through the State Revolving Fund, which typically is low-interest dollars for these types of capital improvements. We may investigate other alternatives to pay for that project, potentially cash, some cash on hand. We might look at also doing a BOT model, which is Build, Operate, Transfer. We've done that twice now with other projects. It's a way to really cut costs and get better facilities built. So we will look at those, but the first step is to submit this. It is due by, in November. We're ready to go ahead and submit it now because of our meeting schedule. We're just unsure we're able to get it approved by November. So we'll answer any questions. Aaron is here as well. I know his team gave us some good briefing information earlier, so we'll answer any questions that you might have.
I'll make a motion for the approval of submission of the preliminary engineering report for the combined sewer overflow improvements at the wastewater treatment plant.
Second.
All right, any questions or comments? Just a quick comment. I just want to thank Aaron, Adam, Whitney for showing up and making sure we're all informed on this. Really appreciate that, so thank you. All right, with that, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our submission of the preliminary engineering report for the combined sewer overflow improvements at the wastewater treatment plant, say aye.
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 Those opposed? That passes 5-0.
4-0.
4-0. Yeah, I even wrote down 4-0. What am I doing? Thank you guys for keeping me on top of my game. All right, our next item is approval of the professional services fee proposal for wastewater preliminary engineering report and modeling. Amendment number one from RQAW. Grant?
Yes, thank you. So we did approve a previous agreement earlier this year with RQAW to get this PER ready to go and do all the engineering work associated with that. Through that process and through discussions with the council, we had identified a couple of things that we want them to look a little further into. I already mentioned that aeration requirement. So they're going to spend a little bit more time, which is above and beyond what the current contract called for. So they have proposed this amendment. There are two parts to this amendment. The preliminary engineering next steps is an amount of $33,640. That's $33,000, I think, well-invested because it has the potential to save us a million, million and a half, maybe $2 million if we can prove. Also, we put in $31,600 for the starting of survey of the western portion of the wastewater treatment plant, which will be where we are constructing these improvements. That will just give a jumpstart to this. We, we know we're going to need to do this. So we're going to go ahead and try to get that survey work done over the winter so that when the PER is approved and we can apply for funding, they can get started on the design. The design for this project has to be accomplished by January of 2026. So we're just trying to get a little bit of a jumpstart on this survey to get us, keep us on that timetable. So the total fee amendment is $65,000 and change. 33,640 plus 31,600. If someone wants to do the math real quick, I probably should have done that, but 65 and change, I'll stick to.
I'll make a motion that we approve the professional service fee proposal for wastewater preliminary engineering report and modeling amendment number one from RQAW.
I'll second.
All right, any questions or comments?
No, I, just a comment. I mean, as Grant mentioned, I think saving anywhere from a million and a half to 2 million, I think that is absolutely what we need to do. You know, IDIM, you know, they're, they're going to sometimes, I think, have a little overreach on some of the stuff that they do. So I think fighting back and showing, improving, you know, our position is, is the right thing to do to, to save a lot of money.
We can't promise that, but.
Yeah, but I mean.
We're doing our best.
Yep, yep. I think it's worth.
We have a good argument. We really do. We just need to prove it to them, which requires an engineer to do fancy calculations, so. Yeah, and get some rain.
Yeah.
Because we're going to do some monitoring of a rainstorm type event.
Yep.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our professional services fee proposal for wastewater preliminary engineering report and modeling? Amendment number one from RQAW, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes 4-0. Next item is approval of quote from Air Source Heating and Cooling for the replacement of an HVAC unit air compressor. Grant?
I hate to continually bring these things to the council. This is the second one I know this year. But we had our main air handler in the basement. The compressor failed. Not under warranty anymore. Three years out of warranty. We need to replace that. This amount, $14,500, is under my authority to approve, so I did give the go-ahead on that. But I would like the council to kind of ratify that decision. We needed to get it started because it's wildly temperature swinging here in the building. We had upwards of 85 a couple of weeks ago, and now it's freezing today, so we need to get this fixed.
I'll go ahead and make a, a motion to approve the quote from Air Source Heating and Cooling for the replacement of an HVAC unit air compressor. And I'll second that.
All right, any questions or comments?
No, I was here for another meeting a week or so ago, and it was definitely warm, so need to get this taken care of.
Is this hopefully the? Is this going to fix it?
I thought the last one would, but we, we believe that this solves the main problem. Yes.
For the record, this is not my father-in-law's company.
Okay.
We need to get him here, confirm that. That's right. Little plug.
All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our quote from Air Source Heating and Cooling for the replacement of an HVAC unit air compressor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. Next item is approval of amendment number one to task order number two for wastewater on-call services with, with Westler Engineering. Grant?
Yes, so as you're aware, typically in January of every, every year, we approve what are referred to as on-call agreements with our various engineering firms for water, wastewater, stormwater. This one with the wastewater, because of the projects we have had ongoing and because of some of the other investigative items, like the surcharge increase that we did. Remember that ordinance a couple of months ago for our industrial users? We have exhausted those dollars that are available. We are recommending increasing that on-call agreement by $20,000. This is a two-year agreement, and we, we did go through the 20,000 this year because of those couple of extra items. We believe this will cover us unless something major happens. But we're, we're asking for the amended compensation from 20,000 to 40,000 for this task order with Westler Engineering.
Make a motion for the approval of amendment number one to task order number two for wastewater on-call services with Westler Engineering.
Second.
Any questions or comments? All right, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving amendment number one to task order number two for wastewater on-call services with Westler Engineering, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. Next item is approval of bid for solid waste and recycling collection with Waste Management of Indiana LLC. Grant?
Yes, so as you know, the Solid Waste Management Board has been meeting, we've met more this year than we have in recent years because our 10-year trash collection contract was coming up, coming due. It expires at the end of this year. So we sent those RFPs out in August. The due date was the 1st of September. We reviewed those to make sure that they conformed to our request or bid request. The Solid Waste Management Board then met in middle of September to review those bids. We received one bid from Waste Management. We received two different options for that bid. One was a five-year contract, and the other was a 10-year contract. After we reviewed the numbers, looked at the cost to our residents and to the town, the Solid Waste Management Board made a recommendation to the council, which was approved unanimously, to recommend the approval of the 10-year option. That option is before you with this spreadsheet. That total 10-year bid amount, for the record, is $6,203,327. Over that 10-year period, those costs that will be charged to the town for the collection of roughly 3,377 units, residential units. We don't collect commercial trash. Ranges from $516,681 on the low end, then goes by, up by about 4% annually. The cost in the year 10 is $735,398. So tonight, we are only asking you to, to recommend approval and acceptance of this bid from Waste Management and then directing staff, meaning myself, the Clerk Treasurer, and our town attorney to negotiate the contract with Waste Management for this, these amounts. We will then, at our next council meeting, have a rate recommendation to the council. And we're potentially looking at a one-year rate and then doing that next year for the following year. But at this point, we're just asking you to approve this 10-year bid from Waste Management. So I'll answer any questions that you might have. That full bid is here. It's, it's available for examination if anyone wants to from the public. But we did vet it. We actually hired a consultant to assist us with this process. He used to work for Waste Management and worked for Raze as well. Gave us a lot of Calvin Davidson, gave us a lot of good advice and helped steer us in a, in a good direction. And I think we actually got a very favorable bid. I know we only got one, but this is a very good bid.
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we approve the bid for solid waste and recycling collection with Waste Management of Indiana LLC.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Well, as far as the surrounding communities, can you talk about what our rates potentially would be in comparison to the surrounding communities?
So I will have further information. We're actually calling around to almost every community around central Indiana to get a more full, comprehensive view of those figures. Typically, when I, when we looked at the seven or eight that we did get the information from, they ranged anywhere from $12 a month. On the high end, I think Beech Grove was the highest at $22 per month. Currently, we're at $11.70, which includes landscape waste collection that we charge at $2.50 per month. Most other communities do not do that. So if you compare the rates, our current rate with those other rates, we're significantly under those other communities. With the cost of fuel going up, the cost of vehicles and equipment, labor cost increasing, there's no doubt that we're going to have somewhere between a 30 and 40% overall increase for this contract over the next 10 years. And it's just, it's just unavoidable. So we'll have more detailed information when the council considers the ordinance on first reading at the end of the month, at October 28 meeting. We'll then have a public hearing. Whichever date in November, we end up setting that meeting because we've got a couple of holidays in there that we're trying to work around. But we'll, we'll let you know when that will come before you.
All right, thank you.
I hope I answered that question.
Yes.
Okay.
If there's no other comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our bid for solid waste and recycling collection with Waste Management of Indiana LLC, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. Next item is ordinance 1393, which authorizes the, authorize and regulates the use of motorized golf carts in the town of Speedway, Indiana. Grant?
Yes, so I got a little bit of a narrative before I go into the details of the ordinance. So council requested of staff that we seek out residents to participate in this process. I know we put out a call for participants in May, and we received, I believe it was around 30 applications. We then recommended to the council 10 appointees, because a board of 30, you can imagine. 10 has its challenges, right, between scheduling and those kind of things, but we then tried to divide those 10 between the, kind of the four quadrants of the town to get good representation. And we appointed 10 individuals who met over from May through end of August, three times. We then also communicated with those other 20 residents that were not selected to seek their input and guidance on the ordinance. I think I sent out at least two different emails, one with a draft and kind of one with a final, seeking people's, hey, is everybody okay with this? As you can imagine, we got half a dozen responses, but not 20. But I, I liked that process. I appreciated the council kind of asking us to do that. I think it's a good kind of case study of how to do good governance, and I think that was good. So we'll definitely look at that as we go through other, I'm not saying we're going to do a golf cart ordinance every year, but other things like this that might come up. I think this is a great model to use. But that committee did meet. We reviewed ordinances from almost every community around us that has a golf cart ordinance. We looked at Whitestown, Westfield, Monrovia, I think, Martinsville. There, there were five or six that we looked at. And we kind of chewed those up, and that committee recommended kind of parts from almost every single one of those. On our side, staff met with various police chiefs. Chief Upchurch helped out with that, made some recommendations. And then we came together to create this ordinance. So I, I'm going to go over some of the high points. Once, if you approve us to move forward tonight, we're not asking for a vote. We will, we're going to do a press release on this, and this is available on the website. You can download it now. But we will do a press release, kind of notifying people, hey, this is what the council's considering. And then we're going to ask you on October the 28th. We don't have to hold a public hearing, but maybe we'll put an item on there for people to ask questions. That's something we'll, Jason and I will discuss. But we'll be asking you to approve that ordinance potentially that night. And then we have to advertise it for at least 30 days after adoption. The goal of this is to have it become effective as of January 1 of 2025. Now, I don't know who's going to ride their golf cart around in January, February, and March, but who, who knows? We'll see. So, so just some of the high points. I'm not going to go, this is about a six-page ordinance. I'm not going to go over every single. But this ordinance makes, makes it specifically clear that operation of a golf cart within town is prohibited unless you follow the tenants of this ordinance. I know we have some golf carts that operate now. I'm not going to mention any names. But this does clarify that. It also does not regulate golf courses. We do have a golf course in our town. Under Section 2, Item E, if you are found to be in violation of any tenant of this chapter, or the vehicle is inoperable, or someone is inebriated, or cannot operate safely, we, we can tow that vehicle from the right-of-way at the owner's, owner's expense. This was put in there because I could see a golf cart breaking down and someone just not doing anything. We've got to get that out of the street. Streets are made for cars. Mixing cars and golf carts can be dangerous, and we want to make sure that those carts are operating well and, and are out of the right-of-way when, when not needed. They shall not be operated on public streets and right-of-ways during inclement weather, and that's going to be one of those judgment areas, but heavy rain, snow, and ice, people should not be driving their golf cart. I think that's, needs to be common sense. No golf cart shall be adorned with large flags, pennants, banners, to, that would impede their visual, you wouldn't want that on a car if you can't see either. So that's an item. Section H, no golf cart shall go over 20 miles per hour. We're not going to have a radar gun out, radar, radaring people. But if it is, if there is a radar gun run, or it, it appears that someone is going quicker, they can be stopped and, and there can be a citation issued. There is no operation of golf carts on days of race until four hours after the race. This is one item that the committee went back and forth on. I know the police would have preferred to have it race day and probably the day before race day. We finally settled on no operation on race day. We have enough trouble with cars and parking. If you can ride a golf cart in town, you can probably walk. I think that was the discussion amongst the committee. So take that for what it's, what it's worth. You cannot conduct business in your golf cart, so no vendors can be selling t-shirts or beverages. You can't do that. We don't want you operating in the town right-of-way doing those things.
Ride for pay, it says here, so.
Yeah, ride for pay, you cannot. Yep. So you can't get a ride from Main Street into the, we're, we're not going to allow that. You have to have a valid driver's license, proof of financial responsibility, which is insurance. We have under here, under Section 3, Part B, you have to be 18 years or older to operate a golf cart in a. B, you have to be 18 years or older to operate a golf cart in a town street. I know that was widely discussed. Next page, under Section E, you have to have a registration permit shown. That registration permit will come from the Clerk Treasurer's office after, at least initially, our police department gives an inspection of the golf cart. You can have no more than five passengers in any single golf cart. Five passengers plus the drivers equals six. That's how many people can be in a golf cart. No alcoholic beverages, don't know that that needs to be said, but under Section F, we have identified minimum safety equipment to include headlights, brake lights, signals, rearview mirror, a slow-moving-vehicle sign, which is actually required by the Indiana State Code, so they will have to have one of those affixed to the rear, a working horn, and then seat belts, and a child restraint. An operator or any person who operates a golf cart, and this is very, very important, under Section 4(c), we discuss this with our attorney, our insurance agency. When people decide to drive a golf cart on a town street, they assume all risk and liability for whatever might happen. That's one thing that I think is very important to identify here. On the next page, just a couple more items, bear with me. You cannot drive on sidewalks, walking paths, trails that are owned or maintained by the town, Town of Speedway, Speedway Trails, et cetera. Golf carts are also, under Section C, prohibited on the four following roads. You cannot at any time have a golf cart in any of these roads. 10th Street. 10th Street is too busy, too crowded as it is without proper clearances and right-of-ways. You cannot drive on 10th Street. You can cross 10th Street if you're coming in from outside of town, but only at a traffic signal and only perpendicular. You can't drive down 10th Street. Crawfordsville Road, with the exception of the crossing at Lynnhurst Drive and Winton Avenue, either one of those, you need a traffic signal. High School Road, except for the exception of the traffic signal crossings at 25th, Hickory Wood Drive, and West 30th Street. So you can't drive up and down High School, but you can go across it to go to like Founder Square or some of those other businesses. And Section D, golf carts are required and permitted to cross at signalized intersections only. You can't cross in the middle of the block. It's just too dangerous. Under registration, under Section B, the committee also chewed on this quite a bit. The registration fee is $100. It will be $200 for non-residents for each golf cart. This will cover the cost of the required inspection, the permitting, the billing, et cetera, and the sticker that we have to give you. Those will cover the cost of that. Permits are good January 1 through December 31 of every single year, and then under Section 7, the penalties are listed. First offense is $150 fine, second offense is $250, third offense and each subsequent $500 fine, and the revocation of the registration permit. So we're going to give two strikes. But if the first offense violation concerns the golf cart not being registered, and a second offense occurs regarding unregistration, the golf cart will be impounded at the owner's expense. Obviously, someone at that point is just trying to skirt the system. We ask that everybody honors that, because we need to keep it safe. So those are the main points of the ordinance. We're holding first reading only this evening. We will have this again on the October 28th agenda. We're going to do the press plan, as I mentioned to you, and then kind of go from there. So I'll take any questions that you might have, and we'll go from there.
Just a couple of things real quick. So as you mentioned, this is our first reading, so we won't have a motion or any vote required.
Yep.
But with that, if anybody has any questions or comments, I had a couple of things, but if anybody else has anything.
Yeah, just a couple of things. First and foremost, want to thank all of the folks who volunteered to be a part of the committee and who reached out and maybe weren't on the committee but still expressed interest. Really appreciate getting everyone's feedback. I think it was really helpful and important, and I really appreciate that we sent out the draft to the folks who weren't on the committee as well. So thank you for going through that process. The only comment that I have is in regards to the registration fees. What I would like to see is, I agree with the initial registration fee of $100, reason being, there are going to be some costs incurred specifically, and there's going to be the need for some road signs and things like that. But I would like for us to knock down the registration fee, following your initial registration, down to $20 annually following that. I don't think this is something where we're trying to make money. I think we could also perhaps even entertain the idea of, if you've had that initial, the initial review of your golf cart, the initial inspection on your subsequent years of registration, perhaps we look at it just being an attestation or something stating that nothing has changed and that you abide by the rules. So I would like to throw that out there for consideration as a change.
Yeah, I agree, and think on the renewal. It'll help the police department, you know, in resourcing with their staffing, too, and then should there be a violation, you know, seen at that point, that would be addressed at that time.
Yeah, and I also worry, you know, the higher the fees, the longer the fees go. I worry that folks will just try to bypass it to not have to pay the fees, and then we're dealing with all sorts of other issues trying to chase that down. So just wanted to throw that out there, but those were the only other thoughts that I had.
And this actually came up on Friday at a call. On Section 2i, about the racing, I know we've got IMSA, we had the endurance race. Will that, the golf cart, or the, let me get my thoughts here.
The prohibition.
The prohibition for the golf carts also apply to those races?
We can definitely enumerate that.
Because I think the concern is the amount of traffic.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And I don't know there's much of an increase on those races. I mean, there is, but it isn't necessarily overwhelming.
Okay. Let me discuss that with Chief, and we can come back.
The way it's written now, it's just for those three races.
The way it's written now, it really was for the big three.
Yeah.
But we can probably spell it out.
Spell it out a little bit better, because I think, too, because I said on, the question I had was about the parking restrictions.
Got it.
Over this past weekend.
Got it.
All right. I just had a couple of things. I wanted to also thank our focus group. I felt like that was a really good use of that group's time, so just thank you to the applicants and participants. I really appreciate your time and recommendations. Also, golf carts in the town of Speedway, that's a pretty big step for our town. So I'm just asking, and I'm hoping, people use common sense, be respectful, be safe. We want to make this something that's positive for our town, not something that's negative. I'll also say, just kind of last thing, too, any questions, concerns? I've had a number of people come up to me, have comments about this. Appreciate all of that feedback, so please call, text, email, whatever, with any of us. I'd love to hear any feedback that you might have.
And I would follow up to that. You can download, it's on the website, the packet, it's included in that packet. We will do a press release tomorrow, and we'll put it out there, so if anyone wants to email or ask questions, that's fine.
I'll make one final, final comment, that if this does get passed, and we see that there are major issues, we will reevaluate.
It can always be revoked, yeah. Like any ordinance, it can be taken away.
Yeah, I just want to get that on.
Yep, on the record. The only other question I had then, Sean, the renewal fee down to $20.
Yeah.
We have a resident versus a non-resident. It was roughly double. Can we identify what that non-resident? The thinking there is, you're not paying property taxes, you're not paying, you know, we do that for outside residents that use sewer and water, those kinds of things.
That's typically, so we would see the uptick, obviously, around race time, is what we're thinking.
Yeah, that's about the only time I would think we would see much of it.
Why don't we, you want to discuss?
Yeah, maybe we can discuss that.
We'll discuss, and in our second reading, we'll have it spelled out.
That's fine. Yeah, we have no idea if we're going to get 10 of these or 1,000. Who knows? So.
All right. If there's no more questions, comments, all, oh, we actually don't need to vote for this ordinance, so I guess we can end our conversation there on Ordinance 1396. Okay, our next item is Resolution 2024-06, which declares a surplus of property authorizing its disposal. Phillip?
Thank you. So far in my tenure, we do this about once a year, try to clean up our capital assets. So equipment, generally speaking, that was over $1,000 when we first bought it, we need to go through a procedure where you declare it a surplus when we go to get rid of it. And so what we have today are three different vehicles. Council may remember not too long ago, purchasing five pickup trucks for the different public works departments. Of those five that we were replacing, we decided to shuffle two of them around and continue to use them, but then there are three that we don't think are worth keeping on the books, and we'd like to auction those off, so this would allow us to do that.
I will make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-06, a resolution declaring a surplus of property and authorizing its disposal.
I'll second.
All right. Any questions, comments?
I guess one question. Would the, any money that's generated from the sale, will that go back into the specific department, general fund? Where would that go?
We'd tie it to the specific department.
Okay.
All right. If there's no more comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-06, declaring a surplus of property and authorizing its disposal, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes 4-0.
I guess I should have said, it'll go back to the specific fund, not the specific department. There are multiple departments and certain funds.
All right. Our next item is Resolution 2024-07, which is amending Resolution 2023-01, which was a resolution relating to the use of funds received from the American Rescue Plan. Phillip?
Thank you. So the American Rescue Plan, if you remember, was a federal provision related to COVID. We were originally awarded about $2.7 to $2.8 million. At the time, we thought we were going to spend that on the certain water utility improvements, as well as vehicles and other equipment for police and public safety generally. The water BOT garage ended up being significantly less than I think was originally budgeted for back in 2020, well, this was originally back in 2022, then 2023. So we have about $607,000 that we need you to reappropriate so that we don't lose that money at the end of this year. And our goal, as contemplated here, would be to use it for vehicles for the street department. These are salt trucks that, different parts of them, we're estimating might be close to 25 to 30 years old, and we've gotten a lot of use out of them, and then an additional dump truck, and then the sustaining general government services. The idea there would be if there's any money left over, or if there's some issue with the purchase of those trucks in time, we could use that towards payroll as well.
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 2024-07, amending Resolution 2023-01, a resolution relating to the use of funds received from the American Rescue Plan.
I'll second.
Any questions, comments?
So I guess I'm just, just to clarify, is there specific, I feel like that was a long time ago when all this money came out, so obviously there's rules and things that you can and can't do with it, so are we just, are we moving this money? Are we just approving future allotment and kind of extending this down the road a little bit?
So there are lots of different federal regulations that apply, but luckily, the option that we went under was for sustaining general government services. It can really be used for anything that we would have done with our operations anyways, but you have to designate in your resolution what you're going to use it for. So previously, the two broad categories that we did was, essentially it was supposed to be for the BOT garage that was built over at the waterworks plant, and then buying police vehicles.
Changing directions a little bit.
So essentially, the BOT came in about $600,000 under what we had originally thought.
Do we have a certain amount of time that we have to use this by?
So we have to obligate it by the end of this year.
Okay.
Which means that it needs to be, in broad terms, it needs to be under contract. So that's why Ted drafted this in such a way that, you know, our first hope is to get those trucks, but they need to be under contract by the end of the year. If there's a problem with that, then we can use it for payroll, and for it to be obligated for payroll purposes, it needs to be a position that already exists now before the end of the year. Then we have, again, in general terms, till the end of 2026 to actually spend the money, but we have to lock it in now.
Okay.
And we, before you guys approved this ordinance, we actually drafted specifications for a bid for those salt trucks and that dump truck. If this is approved tonight, we'll get that out in the next week, probably give it about 30 days, and then accept bids, and should have them committed by the end of the year, no problem.
And I guess just as an overall comment, these dump trucks, salt trucks are ones that eventually will need to be replaced in the next couple of years, correct?
Yes.
So we're, by using and spending the money now, we're saving some general fund expenditures or funds out of the street department.
Yeah, it would actually be the local road and street and MVH funds, the street funds, yep.
Okay. Which are generally underfunded. They don't cover enough of what we need to do.
So this is a good opportunity to buy those trucks, because that department can't necessarily always buy that equipment.
If there's no other questions or comments, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving Resolution 2024-07, which amends Resolution 2023-01, which is a resolution relating to the use of funds received from the American Rescue Plan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 4-0. All right. Everybody stay with me on this one. This is a long one. I will say, too, this is our first reading, so we won't have a motion or a vote required for this. This item is Ordinance 1397, which is an ordinance of the town of Speedway, Indiana, authorizing the issuance and sale of bonds of the town, of bonds of the town for the purpose of providing funds to be used for the costs of the acquisition of right-of-way, design, engineering, inspection engineering, and the construction of certain road improvements, together with all necessary appurtenance, related improvements, and equipment in connection therewith. That's a heck of a sentence.
I had nothing to do with this title. I want to make that clear.
Our attorneys asked if we could do a shortened version, but I said no. Jason likes it when it's all spelled out. As we've discussed at a couple of previous meetings, we are looking to do, hopefully, two large projects in 2025, 2026 for street improvements. So this will be the 25th Street Reconstruction Project and the Crawfordsville Road Pedestrian Improvement Project that we've heard about repeatedly, and proceeds from these bonds would help to fund those in part, hopefully supplemented by various grants that we're moving towards. So this is the first reading, and we do have Lisa Lee from Ice Miller, who I did want to invite up to answer any questions, and then we had one procedural matter that we wanted to take care of. And then we had one procedural matter that we wanted to take care with regards to that. But the par amount that we're looking at is four million dollars. We've spoken with our advisor at London Witty Group and looking at current rates, we think that going through the Indiana Bond Bank is our best option. So we'll have this first reading now. Then a public hearing later this month. Be an application process with the Indiana Bond Bank. Hoping to close around December eleventh.
That's right. Yeah, you can blame the bond lawyers for the title. We like to talk a lot. I am Lisa Lee with Ice Miller, serving as bond counsel on this project. As Philip mentioned, I mean, ordinance number thirteen ninety-seven, it's for a general obligation bond. What we mean by that is it's a bond that's going to be paid by a new property tax levy. And Jennifer Hudson of London Witty will provide you at the, probably the next meeting, with kind of what that impact might look like. We're not asking for a vote this evening. We're asking for introduction of this ordinance and then also introduction of ordinance thirteen ninety-eight, which is the additional appropriation ordinance. So that's the one that will hold a hearing at your October twenty-eighth meeting. And then, as Philip mentioned, we are looking to apply to the bond bank on October thirtieth. They typically have their meeting then around November twentieth, and they'll price their bonds, which will give us the interest rate. It's typically very good, better than you're going to get going out to the open market. So then we would close, we would draft, Ice Miller would draft closing documents for execution after that point and close by around December eleventh, certainly before mid-December. So you'd have your levy for next year and be ready to go. Again, two separate and distinct projects, Twenty-Fifth Street and Crawfordsville Road. So there are no real objecting periods that are applicable to these, since they are separate and distinct projects. Happy to answer any questions?
I just had one item before we get to any questions. I did want to, we were provided a Schedule A-one. I want to enter that into our meeting notes, just for reference. Any questions, comments?
I do have one comment, and Philip, if you want to say this, that's fine. But it's important to understand that this is, yes, it is a new tax levy, but we have two debt instruments that are paying off and falling off of that tax rate.
Right.
So we are taking advantage of that opportunity to, to make these improvements and slide into that tax rate so that there is a very negligible, if not a reduction in that overall property tax rate. But we still garner four million dollars to do these important projects. So it's also important to remember, this four million dollars is leveraging two point three million from the Metropolitan Planning Organization, one point five million from the Community Crossing Matching Grant Program, and we are also potentially applying for one to two million from the City of Indianapolis, NDDPW. I just spoke with Nathan Sheets the other day. And another grant that we might apply for, but we're not going to get all of them. I'm just going to be honest. Two of them we've already generally acquired or secured. But this will help us leverage and turn that four million into eight million.
And all of those are on the schedule that you just entered into the minutes. So that's just showing the grants that have been awarded and the grants that are being applied for. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments regarding ordinance thirteen ninety-seven?
All right.
Could you read it again?
Got to wait two weeks.
Can't wait.
All right, our next item is ordinance thirteen ninety-eight, which we referenced earlier. But that's an ordinance of the town of Speedway appropriating the proceeds of the general obligation bonds of twenty twenty-four. This is also our first reading, so we won't have a, won't require a motion or a vote. Philip?
So, we just went through our budget cycle, and you know that everything has to be appropriated. The difference here is that bond proceeds end up needing to just be appropriated once. We won't have to do this every year that, while we're using it. And so it's just to follow the budgetary requirements there.
All right, any questions, comments? Okay. Next item is approval of claims and utility adjustments. Philip?
Thank you. I do have both requests for you this evening. And they span the time period of September ninth, I'm sorry, September nineteenth, twenty twenty-four through October second, twenty twenty-four. The claims are on eleven pages and total nine million, six hundred, I'm sorry, nine hundred and six thousand and forty-five dollars and ninety-one cents. And the adjustments are on two pages, and it's for four customers total.
I'll make a motion that we approve the claims and utility adjustments as presented by our court treasurer.
I'll second.
All right, any questions or comments? I'll call for a vote. All those in favor of approving our claims and utility adjustments as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That passes four zero. All right, next is our report from our department supervisors. And we will start with Cheryl McRoy, our communications director.
Good evening, council. Let's see, wanted to share a couple of recent news pieces that I put out. We had, last week, we had our third casual conversations for the year. We had a really good attendance of residents. They shared, openly shared questions, concerns, and compliments even to Gray and the department heads that were there. That was the last one for this year. We'll resume those in two thousand and twenty-five. We had two, over the last couple of weeks, few weeks, we've had two ribbon cuttings. One was for the Speedway Event Center located at the Hampton Inn out in Founders Square. They were, they've been open since, I believe it's last May or so, but they, we never really had a celebration in acknowledging their opening. So they worked with us, we got that done. It's a pretty amazing little venue and a great place to hold business meetings, private events, special events. The layout is really spacious and nice. So if anyone's looking for anything, check them out. The other one as, that we had an event ribbon cutting for was the Founders Square Senior Living. They celebrated their grand opening. They have, it's four fifty-five or better in age. Their two-bedroom ability, there's sixty-two bedroom apartments. They offer, along with accommodations, a fitness room, community lounge area, technology room. It's a great alternative that we did not have in the community. So that as people age, they still have the option of staying in the community that they call home, just without the upkeep and maintenance of a traditional home. So if anyone, they do still have a few openings available. If anyone watching is interested or wants more information, they can contact them directly. The number is four six three two nine two three nine four one. That goes to the property management folks. A couple of recent announcements, and these are more fun items, I guess. We rolled out our second annual scarecrow building competition, a fun competition between businesses in town. Folks are still signing up to do that. The first twenty people received free bales of straw to use for their display. We got those from the Famous Tomato. Right now, they're building their displays. And then, once they're done, at the end of the week, we'll put QR codes in each one, each of the displays. Folks could scan that, go out and vote for their top three scarecrows. No big prizes other than for second-place trophies that folks got really excited about last year. So hopefully, people have fun with that one. Like I said, people are still signing up for that, so that was cool. Another program that I just rolled out this week is, I've titled it A Movie on Main. I'm really excited about this one, and I hope the community will be too. So each month, a different business will sponsor a movie. They get to pick out the title. We have the final okay on what the movie is showing. But we're going to show it up at the Plaza Park on Main. And I think it's like a nine-foot inflatable screen that we're getting. It's free to the community, so bring blankets, chairs, that kind of thing. It's set up. You know, we're, we're hoping people will, will check out one of the restaurants in town anywhere, and then bring your food, enjoy a movie. I'm going to try it even through the winter months. Sometimes we have a mild day here and there. So anyway, so right now, I'm pushing that out, working on what movies are available and that kind of thing. So let's see what else I have. Couple of upcoming items. The water line flushing will be done sometime the end of October. I don't have an exact firm date on that, so watch Facebook and the website. We'll, and then I'll send it out on email for distribution as to when the water lines will be flushed. Trick-or-treat hours for the town will be Thursday, October thirty-first, from six to eight PM. And finally, the holiday lights and decorations for Main Street. I had those being installed the first part of November, probably around the second. That's all I have. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Cheryl.
Thank you.
Next up is our police update with Chuck, with Chief Upchurch.
Good evening, council. I'll start tonight with, on September twenty-fifth, we held our apartment managers' meeting where we gathered all of our apartment managers. We, very well attended. We had a couple of complexes that did not make it. A lot of good discussion. Assistant Superintendent Disney was there. We talked about the occupancy ordinance, disorderly housing ordinance, property conditions, and a lot of good dialogue. And, and we used to do those quite often, and after COVID, we got away from that. But under the, with some of the school issues, we decided that it was a good thing to get back together. And I think, I think it was very well received and very positive. We have, as the department, as you know, last year through our budget, we did budget for new bulletproof vests for the department. We, as the town by statute, are required to provide a bulletproof vest for each officer. And those are normally, well, they're just good for like five years. That's the only, the warranty will last for five years. It doesn't mean the vest is no longer useful, it's just not warranted after that. So every five years, we replace those. This is our five-year cycle. And we did apply for, and we have received word that we will be receiving grant funding through the Bulletproof Vest Partnership. They normally will pay for up to half of the cost of the vest. So those have been received and been dispersed to our officers. So they all are up on their, their new vest. And we recently completed our promotional process. I'd like to congratulate Sergeant Kyle Hodges, who was promoted to lieutenant, and Patrolman Nick May, who was promoted to sergeant. That was confirmed at our last police commission meeting. So we'd like to congratulate them. And just a quick update, so far through the end of September this year, we have responded to twenty-one thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven calls for service. That's up about nine hundred and thirty over the past year. And we've issued five hundred, or five thousand, seven hundred and eleven citations through the end of September. So, and I think one of the things to point out with the apartment complexes, we did provide some of our statistics this year. I think sent it out to Cheryl so she can publish that in her next newsletter. And I think the, speaking of the apartments, thus, thus far this year, we've only had thirteen burglaries, which is very good for us. And only four of those have occurred in the apartment complexes. So I think that says something for the management and, and a lot of our apartment complexes and the folks that, I think they're trying to help us out. So, and that's all I have.
So how are the injured officers doing? I know we had one just recently and then another one a couple of weeks ago.
Staff, staffing is a challenge for us right now. We have two officers that are off on medical leave. We're using them in a light-duty capacity that weren't on the job. We do have one officer who was injured as a result of a foot pursuit, separated his shoulder. So he will be back, where we're hoping, mid-month on light duty. So it doesn't look like it's going to require surgery at this point. So hopefully, we'll get him back in a few weeks. But we are having some staffing challenges right now with our, our light-duty officers. And we have one in the academy, our newest hire. He has really breezed through the FTO program. So we're going to be able to put him into service as an officer on his own. That could be within the next day or so. And we are in the process of, we've already, thanks to Cheryl, captured about twenty-eight applicants. And we're going to continue that and then hold a process trying to fill that last spot. So, but it's been a challenge so far. Anything else?
Thank you, chief.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, chief.
The fire department had some last-minute things come up, so they will not be, they send their regrets.
Yes, we will catch up with fire offline. Next up is our Parks and Rec with Tammy Smith.
Good evening. First of all, I want to thank you for approving the air compressor. My purple fingers, thank you, in my sixty-three degree office. This Friday is karaoke night at the Plaza on Main from six to eight PM. So come on out and, and show us what you got. And Thursday, October twenty-fourth, here at the Speedway Municipal Center at six PM, we are going to be conducting our final public meeting on the Parks Master Plan. This will be the final public meeting that we need for submission to DNR. Saturday, October twenty-sixth, from five to six fifteen, is our annual trunk-or-treat. We're real excited about that. It will be held at the Speedway High School Teacher Parking Lot again this year. As in the past, we will have contests for best decorated trunk-or-space. And votes on that come from the people who come to the trunk-or-treat. This year, we're also going to have a contest for the best decorated pumpkin. Anybody can enter their pumpkin, they just bring their already decorated pumpkin. And we're going to have the participants in the trunk-or-treat, they will vote on the pumpkin. So the guests will be voting on our trunk and space. And then our trunk and space participants will vote on the pumpkins. So we're looking forward to that. And then Saturday, November twenty-third, we are working on our first Veterans Resource Fair. I don't have details for that yet. That will be forthcoming. But I did want to throw that out there, Saturday, November twenty-third, watch for that. That's all I have today. Any questions?
Thank you, Tammy.
Thank you.
Next is Public Works, Brad Sloan.
Good evening. I will start with the street department. They have been busy with storm cleanup, street sweeping, sewer cleaning, both sanitary and storm, mowing right-ofways, and yard waste pickup. At the wastewater treatment plant, the plant treated ninety-seven million gallons for the month of September. Maintenance and groundskeeping ongoing. They got the blower back in online for the S and D R, and finished up the wastewater emergency response plan. Speedway Water Works, that plant treated sixty-five million gallons for the month of September. Ongoing preventive maintenance and business as usual. And to steal Cheryl's thunder, I do have the, the dates for the hydrant flushing, which will be October twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth. That's all I have.
Brad, I just want to say, just a special thanks for all the extra work that you guys have been doing after the storm. Saturday morning, someone commented it looked like Jurassic Park and Meadowwood Park specifically. And, but your guys were there immediately in chainsaws and getting the path clear because there was people walking early that morning, so.
That was a lot of rods, guys.
Yeah, yeah, so send that to them, just, I know that's extra work that they weren't accounting on a weekend too, so.
They do a good job. And for your information, the plant did run for about sixteen hours on generator power. So we were very fortunate to get that back on when we did. But no.
That's why we have those generators.
Correct, that is why we have them.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Finally, we have Economic Development with Carmen Lethick.
Good evening, councilors. Here are some items I've been working on since we met last month. I continue to work on the loan program with the Redevelopment Commission. We met last week and discussed some additional possible policy scenarios. So still kind of figuring out what is going to work best for the program with the available funds that we have. I've been working on a Redevelopment Commission statutory requirement that is due in December. I'm sure this has been mentioned, but, and probably everyone knows, but we do have a new retail space opening on Main Street in the Willshaw Apartment. new retail space opening on Main Street in the Willshaw Apartment South Building. Santa's Pit Stop's supposed to open November 2024, so that's really exciting. And still working on, you know, next steps for different projects. I think I mentioned last time, the 16th and Mickley site. So working to get updated infrastructure costs, the last infrastructure costs we have are from 2022, and there's, you know, been increases in construction prices. So trying to get a handle on what is that realistically going to cost the Redevelopment Commission as we move forward with the redevelopment of that site. Old Town Hall, you know, just taking tiny steps forward on that one. I did reach out to the fire chiefs, and we, our schedules are not aligning here in the next couple of weeks due to vacations and things, but we plan on meeting either the end of October or beginning of November to talk about the fire study that was done in 2021. So any questions?
Thank you, Carmen.
Thanks, Carmen.
Next item is our town manager report.
Yeah, actually, I have, I have five things tonight, so I'll make them pretty quick. Staff is working on a, an RFP for zoning review, kind of our zoning code review services. We did budget funds in the 2024 budget for that, with other things that we've been working on that has been put off till this fall, but we are working on that, still going through that. We hope to issue that RFP. I'll get it to the council so you can look at it as well sometime next week and have that potentially approved by the end of the year. Lead service line, we have sent letters out, they were mailed out last, I think, Wednesday and Thursday. I've already had a couple of emails. So if you receive a letter, we're asking you to do a couple of things. According to the EPA, the Environmental Protection Agency, they've changed some standards regarding service lines, lead service lines, and they need us to identify what lead service lines there are in town. The town-owned mains, which convey the water to each and every one of your residences, are not made of lead, but sometimes service lines connecting from homes typically to a meter pit can, if they were built before 1950, be made of lead. Obviously, that's a concern, so we're asking residents, and we're giving two foolproof ways to test, and then we'll do further testing if needed. You can scratch it with a penny or a screw. If it scratches, it's probably lead, because lead is a softer material. The other thing you can do is take a magnet, fridge magnet, stick it to the line. If it sticks, it's steel, you don't have anything to worry about. But we're asking you, if you receive that letter, do that test, go to the QR code that's on the letter, enter the information, and upload that address so that we can make our way towards compliance with the federal government. We did receive two grants to do this process. We're on the second of those grants, and we're working through that. We had to upload our current inventory by October the 16th. I think we did that last week, if I'm not mistaken. I keep looking at Phillip because he's been involved in this process as well. We then have to verify all of those kind of by next year, and then report those final pieces of information to the, to the federal government. So if you got a letter, don't, don't panic, there's, just do those couple tests, and if you can't, do it yourself, call us, we'll schedule our staff to, to go out and assist you. Our fourth annual food drive, Speedway Community Food Drive, will be starting in November. It will run from November the 12th through December the 13th. We support two of our food pantries in town, St. Chris and then the storehouse on the north side of town. Last year, we, we received, I think it was 1,800 and some odd pieces of food. We would love to beat that record, so next month, everybody save up your canned goods and, and please donate. We, we see it as a way to serve those in our community who, who need, need assistance. I did miss the last council meeting. I didn't miss you. I'm, I'm just kidding. But I did miss it. I was attending the International City County Management Association in Pittsburgh, beautiful Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Very interesting city, by the way. I just wanted to share with you, I think I picked seven of my classes that I thought were pretty interesting, and my staff are cringing now because now they realize we're going to talk about how to implement all of these things. One of the sessions was on just better engagement of residents. I think that's something we try to do with our casual conversations, but there's more that we can do. Two, hiring in the 21st century, this was probably my favorite, because it's just different. You just can't hire the same way you did five and 10 years ago. Alternative work schedules, I'm not saying we're going to do that, but younger generations have different expectations of what it means to work for a company or, and there's not many young people working in government. That's a concern that we have. Public finance, this was a broad one, but it was how to better finance public improvement projects. Green infrastructure, I thought was a very interesting, particularly with some discussions we've had revolving around stormwater. We're going to continue to look into those elements. I thought one of the weirdest ones, but definitely something, how government can better use AI to do our job. I thought, oh, it was pretty interesting. I learned a lot. It's kind of scary, too, by the way. So, and the final one was a kind of a second type of conference or session I went to, generational differences. They compared everyone from the greatest generation, you know, our parents, my parents, not yours, you're younger than I am. I don't qualify for the 55-plus housing yet, though I want to point that out. But the greatest generation, you know, boomers, Gen Xer, which I am, and then millennials and zennials, it was just really fascinating with the different perceptions they have, and we need to adjust to that, because if we want people to work for us, we've got to understand how they're thinking and what they are valuing. So that was a good time. Thank you for allowing me to go. I was there for five days, and always after day three, I'm like, I wish I could just leave, as my work piled up. But enjoyed it very much. Our next council meeting is on October the 28th, so this one took the place of the 14th because of fall break. Next year, we'll do a better job of that when we schedule the meetings, but that's all I have for this evening.
All right, thank you, Grant. Next is a report from Councilor Sarah Gardner.
Yeah, I just had two items, one being fall break next week, which is why our meeting was tonight, so just be on the lookout for kids. I know some school districts have multiple weeks, Speedway just has the one, so just be on the lookout for kids. The weather's nice, so I know mine are like, I'm like, outside, outside, go outside. So just be on the lookout for kids in the community during the day. And then, just, just for more future reference, too, the corner of 16th and Lynnhurst had their first, first Friday on the corner event, so really successful event from the new business of the Speedway Artists Collective. They coordinated the whole block of, from Borage and then the Miller Building, different businesses in there, and it was a really great turnout of, there was a band and live music at Borage, and then all the businesses kind of went on the sidewalk to bring art, and Ms. May had her cookies and decorating pumpkin cookies. So that's hopefully a monthly event, so just for your calendars, just the first Friday, just to be on the lookout. It was from about 6:00 to 8:00, so just be on the lookout for that. Just again, a way to get out, support, see some new businesses, a lot of them are very new, so just to be able to continue to see them and just, yeah, continue to visit them frequently, so that's all I had.
All right, thank you. Councilor Harold?
Just a couple of quick things for me as well, if you're not going to go sing karaoke on Friday night. Kind of a special night going on at the, the high school football game this week. This is the, the final home game at Johnson Field as it stands now. So everyone, please come out and support the Plugs on Friday night. It'll be a pretty special event. I believe that they're going to have past players come out and take a picture at some point. I mean, I don't know if it's halftime or before the game, but nostalgic night and historic night, so come support the Plugs on Friday night at 7:00 at Johnson Field. And then, as Sarah mentioned, with fall break, you know, please travel safely. I know, unfortunately for us, we're going to, we're going down to, we have a big Disney trip planned, and there's a hurricane right now going right at it. So I hope everybody has great travel plans and is safe and enjoys some time off. But, but yeah, and we will see you all on the 28th at our next meeting.
All right, thank you. Vice President Sturgeon?
Just kind of echo, you know, safe travels for those going on fall break. And we'll be traveling, so hopefully we won't have many problems, because we are driving, but we're going to DC, going to go take the kids around to see how our federal government works and do some social studies learning while on fall break. But good luck this weekend to the, or to Friday night to the Plugs, and other than that, it's been a long meeting, so I'll cut it short.
I just have one quick thing. Thank you, by the way, Nick. I just want to say good luck to the Speedway High School soccer team. Tonight is their first game of sectionals against Ritter. I've been trying to get an update here, but, so I don't know if the game's over, I don't know where it stands, but Coach Havlin does a great job with them, and just wanted to tell them good luck. And with that, our 17th meeting of 2024 is adjourned at 8:20 p.m.